So yes, Mr. Snuffer just said to make sure I told everybody, uh, said everyone is, gave everyone his regards, but that he couldn't be here. He was sorry.
We'll ride this thing out.
I'm hoping that the guy got our next four. What's that?
Whatever you put on the menu.
Here.
Oh, oh, I don't want any. Goat milk?
Uh huh. Lavender vanilla.
You said it's bad for me on?
I don't know. No, I got it at this place in, um, Princeton. It's. Go shake the hand.
I might need to get both.
Who's gonna go up and do the, um, oh, yeah, and here's the other thing. This person is going to be here, but it's, um, won't be here at 4:30, so can we just move it to, um, can we move it to, put it down here under, probably between 11 and 13:00. Can we move it down to here?
Yeah, like, like it's 11 and a half.
Well, just number 12 or whatever. Can we move it behind 14:00? Like, that's 14:00, then we do it after 14:00.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Hopefully they'll be here by this, that time.
Oh, it's a difference maker.
Yeah.
All right, there, man, I can't hear nothing. That was good.
Now they're kicking away.
We'll call meeting to order. Let's record show that all board members are present except Mr. Snuffer to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion's moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Motion carries. Okay. On our agenda, we'd like to make a small adjustment for the recognitions. We want to move difference maker award to, right before we adjourn, because somebody's not here yet. So does that, have a motion to approve that?
Don't move.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is elementary math field day winners. Miss Jessie.
Good afternoon, Dr. Starcher, President Ford, and board members. My name is Leanne Chesley, and I'm the county math specialist. I'm here today to present the math field day awards to the highest students in Raleigh County Elementary Math Field Day. Students took three tests, a written multiple choice test, a mental math test, and a physical estimation test. We would like to recognize them for their outstanding achievement in math. In fourth grade, honorable mention goes to Ju Gove from Daniels Elementary.
Okay, it wasn't mine. Third place goes to Andrew Tran from Beckley Elementary. Second place is awarded to Jacob Lambert from Gent Elementary. And first place in fourth grade is awarded to Jace Bennett from Daniels Elementary. Next, we'll move on to recognize fifth grade students. Honorable mention goes to Kennedy Boyd from Crescent Elementary. That one. Oh, no, sorry, the sticky went off on the wrong one. I'm sorry. Third place goes to Damian Turner from Daniels Elementary. Second place is awarded to Rohan Rahat from Cranberry Prosperity Elementary. And first place is awarded to Cody Wren from Crescent Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity to present these awards, and please join me in giving all of our math field day winners another round of applause.
So we don't have any agenda items? We don't have any non-agenda items? Communication report. Dr. Hutchins?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I'm good, thank you.
Mari, Marie, you're good? I'm good. How about you, Dr. Starcher?
I will keep it short, but I would like to give a special shout out to the boys soccer team at Woodrow Wilson High School for winning the state championship. And then I believe we have a couple of teams, um, still in the state, well, now in the state tournament for volleyball. Woodrow is leaving at five this evening. They play at 8:30 in the morning. And then I don't have the exact time in my mind, but 3:30 tomorrow, Shady Spring High School girls will be playing. So we have two girls' teams playing tomorrow. I'm sure if anyone would like to attend, that they would love to have a great crowd. But, um, congratulations to both of those teams as well, and we hope to bring back another championship or two tomorrow, or, well, this week. And then I just would like to say on behalf of Mr. Snuffer, he did send his regards and apologizes that he could not be here with us this evening, but he does hope or plan to be back at our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't have any other reports? No unfinished business policies and procedures? The following policy to be placed on a 30-day comment period? Approved revisions of policy E.18, virtual school. Dr. Starcher?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Board members, before you, you will see some minor changes we are proposing to our virtual school policy. Those changes primarily are found on page two, um, 3.15, maintaining a minimum D average in courses completed the semester prior to virtual enrollment. So that's a change from maintaining a minimum grade of D to a minimum D average. And then 3.3, if a student has an IP, the student's IPT must reconvene to determine if fate can be provided in a virtual environment. Other changes reflect those same concepts. If you look on page three towards the bottom, minimum D average, and those would be the recommended revisions. So we would respectfully request that be placed on a 30-day comment period.
Okay, y'all heard your recommendation to have a motion to put E.18 virtual school on a 30-day comment period? Motion's moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Consent items A, B, C, D, and E and F. Is there any objection to approving those as a package altogether? Any of them need to be pulled? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve consent items A, B, C, D, E, and F?
If we approve them as a package.
Motion's moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. New business. A, consider approval of the MOU with access health in Raleigh County schools for support as a school-based mental health provider for 24-25 school year. Everybody speaking to that?
Board members, Dr. Starcher, this is from Access Health, as it says, and we wanted an agreement with them about mental health services. They do have counselors, psychologists at Woodrow Wilson and Stratton Elementary, and this is the agreement that they are recommending.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
I didn't see any problems with it, no man.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the MOU for access health?
If we approve.
Motion's moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. B, consider approval of the resolution urging the state of West Virginia to stabilize the public employees insurance agency. Mr. Questonberry, you want to say a few words? Like five minutes?
Hello, I'm John Questonberry, the president of Raleigh County Education Association, and I'm here speaking on behalf of our organization, of the education employees in our county, and also our colleagues at AFT. Jointly, we have come together and are asking school boards to support a resolution which you have in front of you. Last week, we had a public hearing on PEIA, the health insurance, and the raises for employees are astounding, the amount. We heard stories of young educators who are considering taking their family and leaving the profession or leaving the state, of veterans, some of our ones who see this as a calling, trying to decide financially, can I afford to keep doing this, or should I go ahead and retire? And our most vulnerable are retirees, the ones least able to pay for healthcare rises, but the ones most in need of those services who are going to suffer tremendously. Our board and our superintendent, you have always been supportive of our employees. And our past levy, the employee benefits package, you added extra in the monthly supplement to try to offset PEIA and the costs. And I know you're all aware of how difficult it is to recruit and to retain the highest quality employees possible. And our kids deserve the very best. For so long, our best and brightest have left the area. But I'll tell you, I've sat in on interviews in my school, and we've had people apply for jobs and say, because of what you folks have been able to do, willing to do, Raleigh County pays better, has better benefits. I can do better for my family if I can get a job in your county than in a surrounding county. We're asking that you would support this resolution, which calls on the state legislature and the governor to stabilize public employees' insurance agency, ensuring it remains sustainable, affordable, and equitable for all our public employees. That you call upon other boards of education and state agencies and public entities to join in supporting this resolution and advocating for the stabilization of PEIA. And finally, that a copy of this with your signatures be forwarded to the governor, the president of the state senate, the speaker of the house of delegates, and to our local legislators. It was sad to see that we had, I think it was 17 or 18 people from the public speaking, and we had one member of the legislature from all the surrounding southern West Virginia. It was one of our own, delegate Tony, who was there, to hear what their constituents were saying. So as I said to the PEIA board, we need the help of those within the system as well as individuals. And the more boards of education we have stressing to our leaders in the legislature and the governor's office, that our kids deserve the best, and those who have chosen to devote their lives to our kids and to stay in this state and help build it up deserve to be treated with dignity, with respect, and to be able to afford to continue in this profession in this state. And that's why we're asking for your voices in adopting this resolution to support all the employees and all the students whose lives are in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to approve the resolution urging the state of West Virginia to stabilize the public employees' insurance agency? Mr. Questonberry, you want to say a few words? Like five minutes?
and I'm here speaking on behalf of our organization, of the education employees in our county, and also our colleagues at AFT. Jointly, we have come together and are asking school boards to support a resolution which you have in front of you. Last week, we had a public hearing on PEIA, the health insurance, and the raises for employees are astounding, the amount. We heard stories of young educators who are considering taking their family and leaving the profession or leaving the state, of veterans, some of our ones who see this as a calling, trying to decide financially, can I afford to keep doing this, or should I go ahead and retire? And our most vulnerable are retirees, the ones least able to pay for healthcare rises, but the ones most in need of those services who are going to suffer tremendously. Our board and our superintendent, you have always been supportive of our employees. And our past levy, the employee benefits package, you added extra in the monthly supplement to try to offset PEIA and the costs. And I know you're all aware of how difficult it is to recruit and to retain the highest quality employees possible. And our kids deserve the very best. For so long, our best and brightest have left the area. But I'll tell you, I've sat in on interviews in my school, and we've had people apply for jobs and say, because of what you folks have been able to do, willing to do, Raleigh County pays better, has better benefits. I can do better for my family if I can get a job in your county than in a surrounding county. We're asking that you would support this resolution, which calls on the state legislature and the governor to stabilize public employees' insurance agency, ensuring it remains sustainable, affordable, and equitable for all our public employees. That you call upon other boards of education and state agencies and public entities to join in supporting this resolution and advocating for the stabilization of PEIA. And finally, that a copy of this with your signatures be forwarded to the governor, the president of the state senate, the speaker of the house of delegates, and to our local legislators. It was sad to see that we had, I think it was 17 or 18 people from the public speaking, and we had one member of the legislature from all the surrounding southern West Virginia. It was one of our own, delegate Tony, who was there, to hear what their constituents were saying. So as I said to the PEIA board, we need the help of those within the system as well as individuals. And the more boards of education we have stressing to our leaders in the legislature and the governor's office, that our kids deserve the best, and those who have chosen to devote their lives to our kids and to stay in this state and help build it up deserve to be treated with dignity, with respect, and to be able to afford to continue in this profession in this state. And that's why we're asking for your voices in adopting this resolution to support all the employees and all the students whose lives are in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to approve the resolution urging the state of West Virginia to stabilize the public employees' insurance agency?
I move that we support the resolution to stabilize.
Motion's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Questonberry. Consideration of personnel. Approve superintendent's recommendations for 24-25. Any changes?
Mr. Ford, we have one update to the agenda on, or to the recommendations, I'm sorry. On page one, it says recommended for transfer effective TBD. That effective date would be 11/18/2024, and it says from assistant principal, I mean, from counselor at Ridgeview Elementary to assistant principal at Ridgeview Elementary, and that is Erin Price. With that change, my recommendation would be as presented with that change.
Y'all heard the recommendation to have a motion? Motion's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. B, approve suspension of a teacher.
Suspension of a teacher is, the teacher's name is Ashley Smith.
So do I have a motion to approve Ashley Smith's suspension? So do I have a motion to approve Ashley Smith's suspension? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Approve administrative leave of an aide. Do we need the name?
I believe so. And the aide's name is Lori Leptoe.
So do I have a motion to approve the administrative leave of?
Lori Leptoe.
Oh Lori. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, yeah. Okay, we're going to have a brief intermission. We have something else on our agenda, but we have to wait a little bit for that. So this meeting is a brief intermission. We're adjourned temporarily. Smoke if you got it.
Well, welcome back everyone and thank you for being here. I have a couple of things before we move on with our LSIC meetings. So first, I failed to mention earlier in my comments, and I want to add something real quick. And that comment is about an incident that happened yesterday in our schools. And Mr. Daniel and our maintenance department who worked 12 or more hours yesterday to have the school back up and ready today responding to a small fire. So I just want to see Mr. Daniels back there, and I wanted to thank Mr. Daniel publicly for the work not only he did, but his department as well. So thank you. Now, before we move on, we had a recognition this evening, the Difference Maker Award. And as we started last month, we are each month recognizing an employee of Raleigh County Schools who has been nominated by someone, could be a parent, student, another employee, could be anyone, someone from the community. These nominations come in throughout the month, and we received several nominations again this month, some wonderful nominations. And I'm going to read a little bit about this person and then announce who the difference maker for the month of October was. So this came from a parent, and I'm not going to announce the name yet, so bear with me. "To say this teacher knows her job and knows how to help her children is an understatement. She takes the time to study and get to know the individual students she is helping to make sure she can help them to the best of her ability. She is truly a miracle worker. My child refused to read last year or even want to read. However, through the teacher's patience, consistency, and positive attitude, my child can now read and takes the initiative to read. The teacher was able to connect through a series of books that my child found interesting. She would send these books home for us to read as extra practice. Not only does she build relationships with students, but this teacher takes the time to talk with me when I have questions and concerns. My concerns are never too big for her, and she is never too busy to address my concerns. She takes the time to ensure my student and I that we are progressing during IEP meetings. She's prepared and well-versed in what each individual child needs. She takes the extra time to get to know her students to help individually address their needs to help them be successful. Through her everyday sincere dedication to the students at Shady Spring Elementary School, Monica Tenny is a true difference maker." Ms. Tenny, if you can come forward.
I'm so glad you could come for that presentation. Here you go, this is our difference maker. Congratulations. You're very welcome. Did you know I was reading about you?
I was thinking for a second, but no.
Congratulations. If you'd like to do anything.
I don't think I can right now. I just think you know it so well.
It sometimes pays off to know people. So Mr. Tenny, who we work with through AFT, happens to be Ms. Tenny's husband. So he was able to get her here for a presentation he was supposed to be doing. So thank you, and we're glad our mom and Ms. Morrison could be here as well. So congratulations, and thank you for truly making a difference in our students' lives, Ms. Tenny. Thank you. And the Tenny family and Ms. Morrison, you are free to leave if you would like. You don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you so much. Ms. Tenny, on the bottom of your award is the name of the student at Park Middle that made that for you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on with our LSIC meetings. These meetings were set up to be the speakers from your communities, the stakeholders in the education, and we thank you all for being here. First on our agenda tonight is Beckley Elementary, so if you could introduce your team.
I'm Shanna Register, the principal at Beckley Elementary, and I also have my assistant principal Heather Greenwald, and one of our at-large members, John Greenwald, and another at-large member, Brian Copey, and he works at the prison, which is one of our partners in education. I also have Virginia Hinkle, known as Jenny. She is our PTO president, and we share her with Beckley Stratten and with Woodrow. So she's all around great. We have Mary Stowers, who is, she drives our biggest bus, and we never have one issue come off of her bus when she is here. We also have Brian Hall, who is custodian, who keeps our building the cleanest in the county. We have Kristen Stanley, fifth grade teacher. Tracy Canadae, she is first grade teacher, and Ms. Leslie Tyree, who is kindergarten teacher and also our chair. So do you all just want me to just go over the report? Okay, so starting with the GSA data, in 2023, that's where I'll start, in math, Beckley was at 18%. In math, Beckley was at 18% proficient. In 2024, they gained up to 31%. In reading, in 2023, they were at 21%, and in 2024, they were at 33%. And unfortunately, in science, they ended in 2023 with 14%, and they went down to 5%. So I had three major concerns for the year when we discussed this. The first one being fifth grade math. When students reach fifth grade, they are multiple grade levels behind. Therefore, the fifth grade math teacher must try to cover previous standards along with the fifth grade math standards. So that is very difficult by the time they get to fifth grade. Also, when we had our first meeting at the end of September, we had 11 DRFs. Five were from one bus, and six were from various classrooms. So we were already concerned about our level of DRFs at the end of September. And fourth and fifth grade lunch, that is our rowdiest group because they are our biggest kids, and they are loud and they leave the cafeteria messy. So we have put plans into place to correct all of these things. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. So for fifth grade math, this year Beckley Elementary has four Title I teachers, which we're very grateful for. So we've divided them up. Two are working in K2 classrooms and two are only working in 3-5. And this year, classroom teachers were given the title schedule, and they had to build their schedule around using that title schedule. So that is when they are having small groups every day. Ms. Metter is our 3-5 math Title I teacher. She is pushing into each 3-5 math class for an hour of small group instruction. Having a second teacher in the classroom during small group instruction has decreased the amount of time spent off task from students. So basically, every kid is getting two small groups from an adult every day in reading and math in grades three through five. And she is focusing on the prerequisite skill from I-ready. So she is able, we are starting to close those gaps while the teacher still focuses on the grade level standard. So the kids are actually getting both this year. This ensures every student is learning the standards they did not master in previous grades and still receiving grade level instruction. Increase in behaviors. Educator's Handbook was purchased with Title I funds for the 24-25 school year. This allows interventions to be put in place before a student receives a DRF. Administrators rode the bus to assist the driver as all five DRFs had been received from the same bus. And this was a new bus driver, so students were trying to see what they could get away with. Since administrators have ridden the bus and put expectations in place, no DRFs have been written from that bus anymore. So it's gotten straightened out. Fourth and fifth grade lunch. Only one class sits at each table, so we have split them up some more. This has made the cafeteria quieter and students cannot yell across the table to other students. If all cafeteria expectations are followed Monday through Thursday, music is played on Fridays. Fourth and fifth grade students have been applying to assist in cafeteria cleanup after their lunch. Students must apply and cannot have any behavior issues during the week or any tardies. And that is all thanks to Mr. Hall because he does all that. They apply for that job with him, and he decides if the music gets put on on Fridays and they get to sit with a friend on Friday. So that's one of his 1% that he does at Beckley. So identify what the board can do to assist you in your school providing a high-quality education for your students. Curriculum. Thank you for the purchase of Ready Math. Beckley Elementary has a very transient population, so this has ensured all students are receiving the same math curriculum. Staff development. Beckley Elementary staff would like to receive PBIS training for everyone in the building instead of just the PBIS team, which the team does come back and train, but everybody would like to hear the same thing. They would also like MTSS training for behavior and attendance for the entire staff. Personnel. We have the personnel we need to make gains at Beckley Elementary. Our counselor, social worker, and CIS liaison each have a full caseload of students they work with to help with the social, emotional, basic needs of our students. With this support in place, teachers can focus more on academics. Losing any of this support would leave our students without those needs being met, and teachers would then have to focus less on those academics. Facilities. I know you've heard it before. Beckley Elementary is still in need of a full-size gym. And then I put on here that our volleyball team was ranked last in the county because they don't have a proper gym to practice the skills they need to win games. And while our basketball team did come in third when we had our, played multiple games, and one day our team struggled. Without a full-size gym, our students cannot build up stamina to play for long periods of time. While this is a huge need for our school, we do have some smaller needs for our facility. Ms. Greenwald's office was once a conference room only. So it does not have a window. This could be a safety issue. The only windows looking out of the office into the parking lot are in the principal's office, and a person has to get up and walk over to see the parking lot. Adding a window to the assistant principal's office would give a better view of the parking lot. We would like an awning over our sidewalk used for parent drop-off. Students must walk in the weather, and the ground becomes muddy and slick, which would cause students to slip and fall. And tent needs to be added to the classroom windows in the back of the school. This is where parents line up at the end of the day for parent pickup, and they are able to look into the classrooms, which is a safety issue. The biggest accomplishment for the year. Beckley Elementary moved up 35 places on School Digger because of the increase in test scores. While we do have a long way to go with academics, this was a huge accomplishment for the staff and students. And this is a huge one. During the 2022-23 school year, 343 DRFs were written. During the 23-24 school year, 49 DRFs were written. Using proper interventions, having the support personnel needed, and implementing PBIS have helped decrease the number of behaviors. And that is just all of the staff because they've all worked really hard in getting those numbers down. And I do have some additional information. Students in preschool are not moving into kindergarten with the skills they need to be successful. The staff at Beckley Elementary believes this is partly due to the inclusion of preschool special needs into the general preschool classroom. Teachers and aides cannot focus on preparing students for kindergarten because they are now focusing on behaviors and keeping students safe. And I know that's not only happening in our preschool. And then I did note the next issue because we had some Safe Schools phone calls to the hotline last year. Beckley Elementary students have some of the highest trauma in the county. Having the elementary behavior disorder classroom at Beckley Elementary is not helpful for the students who have witnessed trauma. When a student in the behavior room is screaming, cursing, throwing objects, and throwing furniture, other students in the building can hear this. This causes them to relive the trauma they see at home and takes away school as their safe place. While this does not happen daily, we need to ask ourselves if this is fair to all the students. Could we come up with a better plan such as a four-day week for the behavior room? Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
One. What's your average class size?
Around 20.
Around 20?
Around 20, yes. And that varies. Like, first grade started out as our smallest group at the beginning of the year. We only needed one age. And now I believe they're our largest group. We've had so many move in. So it's very transient. And I did not realize that until I started at Beckley this year, how many rotate from Stratten and Math Scott. So that was eye-opening to me.
It's always been like that for years. They come and go.
That was eye-opening. So and now I see how important that math curriculum is. And I saw it when I moved here last year in January, how six different feeder schools were coming in and each had been taught something different, and how difficult that was for a sixth-grade math teacher.
Wow, that's interesting. That's interesting.
Any other questions?
One of the reasons I was asking was because I noted that you talked about your staff, and you think you have everyone in place, and that you can make the gains that you feel like you should and need to. I was wondering about class size because, you know, that dictates teachers.
Right. We're not overly crowded, but we're not small enough to need one for grade level. So we're kind of sitting at a big spot.
Any other questions? Thank you. Yep.
I really do, I know that Beckley Elementary is not performing where it wants to, but I do think, well, I want to make sure to commend Beckley for the growth that you received, you demonstrated last year. You know, you don't get anywhere if you don't start. And I know I've said that before, but it's clear that you were really, you know, you really worked hard last year. Not that you didn't in the past. I don't mean it that way. But you had some tremendous growth. So I just recommend or encourage you to keep on working hard. I enjoyed the day that I spent at Beckley Elementary was a lot of fun. I had a great time with your students. And so thank you for the work you're doing. And then I just want to thank Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall is one of our shining custodians here in Raleigh County. And when Ms. Register first told me what you were doing in the cafeteria with the music on Fridays, I just think that's a great idea. I thought it then and I'll think it again today. So thank you so much for what you're doing, not only in the cafeteria, but throughout the building. You're doing a fantastic job. Everyone might want Mr. Hall if they know what kind of gym he is. But anyway, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Bradley Elementary.
Good evening. I would like to introduce the members of our LSIC that we have with us this evening. We had several people who were unable to be here. We have Ms. Otta. She is one of our teachers. Mr. Bowman, Brian Bowman, he's also one of our teachers. Amy Warden, she is a bus driver for Bradley Elementary. She does a wonderful job. We have Ms. Sue Burton, who is a parent. We have our three at-large members here. Ms. Sharon Smith. I got her last name right. I know her brother, and so I put her maiden name on things a lot. Amanda Anderson, who is also our volleyball coach, and Ms. Margaret Painter. Mama Margaret. I have to say mama, or she's going to say it. Our performance measures on the General Summit of Assessment. This year, our scores did drop in both math and reading. For 2024, math was 42% proficient, and that was a drop from 47% proficient. Reading was 50% proficient, and that was a drop from 42. I'm sorry, 52. Thank you. In science, we did show some growth. We were at 33%, and 2023 was 30%. So as you might imagine, this leads me into our major concerns for the 24-25 year. Our biggest concerns for the 24-25 school year are improving student achievement in both math and in reading. While our I-ready data from the end of the year last year indicated that we should show growth in reading and also remain the same in math for this year, this did not happen. Our scores fell slightly, and it was, that was a big disappointment for the staff of the school and for myself. And so this is something that we're working on to raise student achievement. Our plan to correct this concern, we have scheduled a Walk to Intervention block with each grade level. We did this last year as well. This strays a little bit from what's on the paper, but I just wanted to explain how we have evolved this idea. Last year, we started the Walk to Intervention, and we did that during preschool specials. So it was school-wide at one time. This year, we have worked our Walk to Intervention around our Title I teacher schedule. And so to get back on track here, we focus on math three days a week and reading two days a week with our groups. Our Title I teacher schedule follow the Walk to Intervention schedule, and therefore, we're able to have at least five small groups per grade level in third through fifth grade, and seven small groups for first and second grade because of our ECATs. The small groups are based on I-ready data that's gathered from each benchmark. And as students master skills, their group may also change between benchmarks. If we see that they've mastered a skill, either from progress monitoring or teacher assessment, then they can move to another group with a different skill. We also have parent involvement activities planned for both math and reading language arts that include methods parents can use to help support students in both curricular areas. Let's see. Curriculum. We would like to thank the county for providing the simple solutions for the spiral review in math. Obviously, this is one of the areas that we are low in. And so we would hope the county continues to do this as we see that spiral review as being very important. Staff development. Our Title I funds are very helpful with school-based staff development. And we currently have a book study planned for this year. However, our books have not come in yet. For personnel, we greatly appreciate that our counselor's position remained full-time last year. And we do hope that that will continue into next year. That is such an important position in our school. The demographics for our school are changing. As some of you know, we are becoming a school that has a transient population somewhat. And so having a counselor, a full-time counselor is very important. Concerning facilities, we would like to ask again for new classroom doorknobs and locks. While I have been able to work with maintenance on getting keys for the various doors throughout the building, I have four or five master keys that I use to get into different parts of the building. And we just view it as, you know, a safety concern that we would like to have keys, well, locks and keys that match throughout the building. I've requested new doors with windows for four of our classrooms. These are rooms 29, 31, 33, and 35, and they are in the new section of the building. For safety reasons, these doors need to have windows. No one can, no one knows what's going on in those rooms unless you can get into the room and gain access. Something that was mentioned to me when I first came to Bradley by someone, and I didn't believe it, we need basketball backboards. The ones that are in- The ones that are in our gym are original to the building. And I did not really believe this person when they told me that the, the goals have to be adjusted until I saw a referee actually go get the pole and like crank the goal up because they just twist down. And so we would like to have new basketball backboards so we don't have that problem. The last thing I had placed on our facility needs has actually been taken care of. I had asked for a paved area near the flagpole for a handicap parking spot. However, maintenance, Mr. Dillon, Mr. Daniel have come in and they've actually reformatted our handicap parking. And so it's very easy to access in the front of the building. Our biggest accomplishment for the year. As science is an important content area, we are proud that our fifth graders from last year increased achievement from thirty to thirty-three. While this is small growth, it is still growth. Our fifth grade teachers carefully plan meaningful science activities that include dissections and experiments. We also feel that our community involvement is a big accomplishment. We have many parents who are supportive and work to be involved in activities that happen at school, including a recent local author visit and reading on the lawn. We anticipate that our math night will draw a good crowd. Last year, we had a math games night, and it was a great evening with a good turnout of parents. Teachers all had different board games or just games. And they taught the directions to their groups, but included in that was the math that went along with the game. Keeping score. Some of the games were math-based. And so I think that will draw a really good crowd again this year. As always, we also appreciate you taking the time to listen to our needs and concerns for our school. And I would invite all of you to come out to our building. It's a really special place to be, as you know. We do. Yes, we do have math mats. And we are working to implement those in all of the rooms. Ms. Halsted is our academic coach. She has worked with several teachers. I know she's worked with Mr. Bowman to have those out. And our PE teacher has his math mats. He uses those as well.
This was Bradley built. Do you remember Charlotte? I know, but they have the same backboard for. That's a long time.
I really didn't believe it when they told me that the, that the nets would fall. And then a ref like cranked it back up, and I was like, oh, it really does. It's real.
How many students do you have?
Students, currently, we have, our population is just above three hundred. Our, we are a school that is losing students more than we are gaining.
They're all that way.
I know. I just, I feel like we're getting hit really hard. I don't know. Yeah.
Dr. Starcher.
I just thank Ms. Howe and her committee for coming out this evening. And it's always fun to visit Bradley. So you're very welcome. Thank you for the work you're doing and just stay steady. I, I saw Mr. Dillon nod with the backboard comment, so we'll certainly.
Help me get those boards.
Take a look at that real soon. That might be something we can fix sooner than later. So yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Lord, I taught at Bradley forty years ago or whatever. We're still there. I thought they were a long. Right. That's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't know when the sister schools were built. Oh, I'm hearing from the back, they were built in seventy-six. So that's forty-eight years ago.
Thanks for taking care of them.
They've all, they've all been at the sister schools, those three, so they're saying seventy-six. So that's a, that's a long time. So. I, I will say there are some things that, some of these requests, well, first, the, the, we typically can't do all requests every year, but there are some that we can do this year. There are some that the board budgets for, and then we do them next year. I would think there are some of this we could do sooner rather than later. Okay, thank you. Y'all have a good night. Thank you so much.
He was sitting back there shaking his head at me. I was like, okay, well, I guess they really are bad. I mean, his head as soon as you start talking. Thank you, Megan.
I can't believe, I was gonna say, I can't believe they've held up that long. Nope. Of course, I don't know when I went to Woodrow. I swear they had the same desk, the teacher's desk as they were when I went in as a student.
They very well may have. We've heard from these.
Well, we replaced them when we, we replaced them when I was there, but Phillip held.
So welcome Cranberry. These LSIC meetings are so we can hear from your community members, which is part of your LSIC team. And could you tell us who they are?
The numbers, oh, there it is. Yeah, my staff will be laughing because I certainly do not need this normally. And so thank you and thank you for having us tonight. I'll just quickly go around. Juliana Huff is a kindergarten teacher at Cranberry. And this is Kelly Gano. She is one of our community partners who I've decided I need to just have her on my staff all the time because I feel like I call her weekly. So I converse with her on a regular basis. I have Leanne Collins, who is a parent. We have Jamie Patton, who is one of our community members. We have Steffi Gerald, who is one of our Title I teachers. We have Joe White, who is a parent. Justin Shrewsbury is a parent. Alicia Kostenko makes me be able to do my job. She is my secretary, and we all know who really runs things at a school. That's her. And Crystal Shrewsbury is a bus driver and here with us as a service personnel representative. So thank you all for being here with us. I wasn't in here whenever Ms. Megan started. So am I assuming that we're just going through the report? And all right, so we'll jump right in. And I know you'll stop me along the way if there's any questions. So when we talk about our data, we did see growth in math and reading last year. It is not what we're happy with, but growth was made in both areas. And so when we talk about our major concerns for this school year, we're continuing to focus on improvements in reading and math GSA scores. We did have a significant drop in science, and that is something that we're addressing this year. And we're still in need of playground upgrades and improvements. So we do have some plans in place to address these things. In an effort to move students toward higher proficiency in reading and math, we've implemented the walk to intervention model. And so what this allows us to do is have less time for students out of the classroom. And our Wendy Peters, who is our academic coach, and is so, so wonderful. She's invaluable to us. She really worked hard with our special ed and Title I staff to make sure that classroom teachers were doing small groups at the same time that those people were pulling from their classrooms. And it just keeps small groups from being pulled out at all random times of the day. And that way, they're in the classroom more often and with less pullout and giving them that extra support that they need. But our teachers did work hard in making that model work for us. And also in an effort to address our students with disabilities group, those students are getting a double dose of small group instruction. So they're getting it out in their small group, and then when they come back to the classroom, they're able to get small group instruction with their classroom teacher again. And then focusing on that students with disabilities subgroup, two of our special ed teachers just recently attended an Ireland training to learn how to help address students who have perceptual light difficulties. There's a lot of research behind this. We've all heard it. Whenever Sandy Trent was my principal at Bradley years ago, I remember we talked about red overlays and that they found, you know, there were some studies that showed that that helped students or it helped certain students. So this is really just that same idea, but they've taken it even further. And it's actually through Cornell University. And they're able to determine that lots of children, lots of adults, lots of people are suffering with light perception issues, and they don't even realize it. And it distorts what they're seeing on the paper. And so simple things like color overlays, there are different, different ones that kind of do different things depending on what children are seeing. And so they were able to go learn about this, bring it back to us. And so we're slowly practicing some of it with our students right now. But the research behind this is pretty amazing. If it does what they're saying that it does, we really hope to see some great results for our students. Also with help from our academic coach, we're putting an emphasis on explicit daily writing instruction in grades three through five. The writing portion of the GSA is worth forty percent of the total score. And that's not been an area that was strong for Cranberry in the past. And so we're focusing on that writing instruction. And then we're also utilizing two after-school tutors that'll focus on K-three students who didn't meet the cut scores on iReady diagnostic to kind of give them a double dose, double whammy, hopefully with a little extra help as well. And to address that dip in our science scores, we've set aside protected time for explicit science instruction in our fifth grade class. Sometimes I think in all grade levels, science and social studies will sometimes kind of get pushed to the side because we focus on reading and math, and we know that that can't happen. So we have protected that for our fifth graders. And then all staff members across the county, across the school are utilizing the mystery science program that the county has purchased for us. And then our fifth graders, while they're doing that, the science teacher is really focusing on project-based learning opportunities for them because we've found that that's going to be one of the best ways to hopefully have them ready for that GSA science test whenever it rolls around. I heard some, well, I'll get to that in a minute. Cranberry applied for the playground grant last year, but I don't believe those have been awarded yet. So we'll play, we plan on applying again this year. And our students did participate in a read-a-thon last spring to raise additional funds for our playground, and they raised four thousand dollars with a read-a-thon that was specifically just for playground improvements. So hopefully, when all of those things get rolling, we'll be able to put that money to good use and get some improvements for our playground because it's pretty bad out there. Michelle was there with us the other day and walked outside, and she was surprised at the state of our playground and the equipment that's there. So we're excited and hopeful that we're going to be able to address that. As far as what you guys can do to help us at our school with the curriculum, we are appreciative of the new math series and the PD opportunities that we've had. As far as staff development goes, when we met, our teachers were saying that all of the trainings that they had at the beginning of the year were wonderful. But as I'm sure has been discussed by lots of people, we were out of the building a lot. They felt like they were out of the building a lot at the beginning of the year. And so I know that was something that Dr. Starcher has already addressed with principals and said, we're going to do something a little bit different next year. But that was just one of the things that they had mentioned, that they would like to have some more days with everybody in the building. And we still continue to benefit and need PD associated with meeting the diverse needs of children from trauma because we continue to see that as something that we're struggling with. Our personnel, we are so happy, and we thank federal programs for our social worker in our building. We have her three days a week. The only thing that would be better is if we could have her all five days in the week. Malte, you knew I was going to say it. I always throw that at her every time we talk about her or coaches. But she has been instrumental in helping with social emotional needs of our students, making home visits with families. Many of ours do not have transportation to school. And so she's been able to do the transportation there, take the paperwork to the parents and take care of it that way. She's connected families to outside resources, just to name a few of the things that Ms. Kate has done. But we also, talking about personnel, we have a need for extra assistance in maybe running SAT and IEP meetings. We're at two-seventy. So we know that we don't qualify, even though that's big for us. We don't get a, an assistant principal. But I know that other counties within the state, especially after there were some changes with how we were able to use our counselors, have made some changes. And I've noticed that they are rehiring and posting SAT site coordinators for like as an extracurricular position. And this would be especially helpful because we're now required to show multi-tiered support, not only for academics, but for behavior and attendance as well. And so if we had, we were able to supplement or help, sorry. But if we were able to do that, I don't know if that's even a possibility. But like I said, I know that other counties have, have done that. But I have several staff members I know that would be willing to take that on if that was something that could possibly happen. For our facilities, our playground still remains our number one need. And as I stated before, we're blessed with a very large playground in size. But all areas need some, of the general playground need work. And our pre-K playground is a fenced-in area as required by policy, but it needs to be enlarged to accommodate the number of pre-K children that we serve and make it compliant with policy. This could be solved by extending the fencing and doubling the size of the pre-K play area. And that area also needs toys and implements because it currently only has one climbing toy. Some of our classrooms in our building will need new flooring or carpeting if possible. Last year, due to necessity, we had a wet, moldy area in carpet. So it was taken up and replaced with new carpet, and it looks wonderful in that one classroom. But we have eight other classrooms in that old section that we would love to have new carpet in because I believe the carpet was there. I attended school there in the eighties, and now I'm thinking that orange carpet might have been there in some of those classrooms in, in the eighties. And I laughed as I heard Cranberry, or Bradley, talk about their backboards. I didn't put it in ours, but we, we have old backboards as well, the little half-circle ones. And we did ask whenever Park Gym was being torn down if it was possible that we could get their old backboards. And maintenance has told me that they are setting at maintenance for us, but that they have to, that they came up to look and installing them much different than what's there currently. So they were going to have to decide if and how they might be able to do that. So those are on standby if somebody could figure out a way to, to get those up. Our biggest accomplishments in this school year, we were excited because we met our annual growth target in both areas of the GSA. And while that's not good enough yet, we do continue to work on ensuring that more of our students are proficient in reading and math, but we are proud of meeting those goals. We had started an after-school reading club that just started this evening to promote reading. Bradley has done a program, I know Ms. Hammerick has done that with her granddaughters in the past. It was Patch Club and ours is Readers as Leaders Club. And tonight was the first night, and we had a large turnout. I had gone to the school after the first session here, and I was so excited and surprised. And I was surprised at some of the families that I saw. So hopefully, that will continue to grow for us. Our parent lighthouse team, which is our PTO, is continuing to grow and has been able to find multiple opportunities for parents and guardians to volunteer or help at the school level because that was one of the things our parents told us they missed and wanted. And then finally, we attained lighthouse status for a second time. And this is an honor given to Leader in Me schools who show continued opportunities for student leadership growth. We've heard from administrators and teachers from here at Beckley Stratton and other middle schools that tell us that they can oftentimes pick out Cranberry students based on the student's ability and willingness to engage in public speaking or take on leadership roles. And we're proud of that program and the skills that our students are able to take away from it. And then, I'll finish up just by telling you once again how thankful we are for the facility upgrades that we've received at Cranberry. In addition to having the front entryway completed, we have new paint all throughout the building for the first time in a long time. We have new lights in our gymnasium and additional new light fixtures that have just been installed throughout the rest of the building. And we truly appreciate those because we were kind of stuck in a time warp for a little bit there. And we also had a wonderful turnout for parent-teacher conferences. And we appreciate that the board and our central office recognize the importance of setting aside specific time, allowing for those staff and family connection opportunities. So thank you for that.
Any questions?
Thank you. It looks beautiful, doesn't it? Sue Baber did our decorations out front. It really looks pretty, especially at night. I think at nighttime, it's especially beautiful.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Gunner. She has amazing energy and she's very passionate about what she does. So thank you for the work you're doing. And I know you said earlier that the gains weren't what you wanted, but like you also said, you met your target and just keep on keeping on. And small steps will lead to big steps, big gains. So keep up the good work, Cranberry. And we'll look at those backboards. I kept looking for Mr. Daniel. He's sitting back there. But I don't, I don't know a whole lot about the backboards, but we will, I mean, I know the ones you have. I've seen those.
Yeah, it's going to have to be modified somehow to hang them. So, and it may not even work. I mean, it may be something we have to do something different for.
Okay. Sounds like we have some old backboards in many elementary gymnasiums. So we'll look at that. We do have a elementary basketball program, so we'll look at that. That is true. That is true. And thank you for that. Thank you for accommodating Beckley Stratton's teams while their gym is being worked on. So anyway, thank you for everything and you guys have a nice evening.
What year was it built? We were trying to figure that out the other day.
What year was it built?
It looks much better on the outside. It does.
Wait, just a moment. Mr. Dillon.
So before Ms. Richmond gets started, Maxwell Hill, we do have an award to present to Maxwell Hill, Ms. Richmond. It's a Beautiful Campus Award. As we know, we have four place winners in the elementary. And I think in the past, well, I know in the past, that you've placed before in the past. You care to tell us what you placed last year? Yes. So as I said, there's four places in the elementary realm. And this year, I'm happy to announce that Maxwell Hill has earned first place for Beautiful Campus. They do work really hard. Everyone in the room knows Maxwell Hill's playground and campus is always on display. It's right in the middle. And you have to, you have to slow down and stop at a stop sign. So it's always, it's always great. They do a great job and this is well-deserved.
Okay, now you can give us something else to celebrate. Yep. Do you mind introducing your crew?
Is that better? Okay. Well, with me this evening, I have Colleen Finch as one of our community members. And we have Cindy Chapman. She's one of our teachers. And Jessica Jackson. She is a kindergarten ECAT. Sean Keller is one of our teachers. And then, we have Ashley Turner and Becky Meredith, parents. So thank all of you all for coming with me. We are excited about many things going on at our school this year. We did meet our targets in both reading and math on the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment as well as each subgroup. But it is our expectation that we're going to show additional growth this year. Even though we met our targets, we still want it to be higher than where we are. We currently have a solid staff committed to make learning meaningful and engaging every day. We have school-wide goals to increase our ELA and math scores in all grade levels in I-Ready as well as our West Virginia GSA. Another goal that we're working on is our attendance. And although we have a solid attendance rate right now, I looked it up today, it was at 95.4%. The last two years, our chronic absenteeism rate has exceeded 20%, which is entirely too high. So it is a goal that we reduce that under 20% for the year. And on Zoom today, it was at 12.4%, which was a whole lot better. And so, I was celebrating that, but as we all know, that changes every day with the number of school days we have. So we know that we've got to continue working on that all year and encourage our students to come to school regularly. Another goal of the school is to reduce negative behaviors throughout the building. And along with every other school in the county, we have implemented a school-wide PBIS plan this year that we do believe will continue to assist in building positive school culture and reducing those negative behaviors. Our foundation for this is we built an acronym off of PAWS. The P is Be Prepared, and then Act Responsible, Work and Play Safe, and Show Respect. Our PBIS team meets regularly to analyze our behavior data. And we also talk about that data in our staff meetings with the purpose of updating our plans so that it meets the needs of our students in school. We recognize it has to be a fluid plan to keep it relevant. Students have regular character education lessons in the classrooms and our counselor prepares additional monthly lessons for each classroom. And as part of our PBIS plan, we created a PAWS store in which students receive PAWS for making good choices and positive behaviors. And the PAWS that the students earn, they can save and then have a chance a couple of times a week to go to the PAWS store. It has been a huge success so far and created lots of excitement for the students throughout the building. And I think that it kind of teaches some life lessons too because they learn that when they want bigger things, they've got to save longer and earn more. And it's funny to see the kids that have to, every time it's open, they run in there and spend every little dollar they've got and then the other kids that try to save. So it's been, I think, interesting for them. The biggest issue is keeping it stocked. We have worked on some creative things to help keep that going. We think it's important to celebrate our students that do the right things. So we've also implemented a Panther Pack this year for our third through fifth graders that, and this is, meets several of our goals. It helps us with that. The students that receive an A in conduct, meet their A R goal, and then they have less than five excused absences or no unexcused, then they are part of the Panther Pack for each nine weeks. And they receive a certificate and get some type of extra incentive. And that has been something that the kids have gotten very excited about after the first nine weeks. They were running back to the room telling the other ones what they missed and how they've got to not have any, you know, so many absences next time so they can come to. We also have a goal of increasing our community involvement. We're continuing a partnership with Read Aloud and we're planning a STEM day in the spring that we want our whole school community to be a part of. We did have teachers at the school that received four different of the Beckley Area Foundation Students First Grants. And all of those were really good, good grants, I think, that we got that will assist us in our goals as well. Last year, I told you about our buddy reader partners that we have throughout the building. And that went really well last year and we're continuing it this year. And for the most part, the kids have the same partner they had last year with the older students teaming up with younger students to be reading buddies throughout the year. We do have a few needs and concerns. We still would love to have either a full-time counselor or a social worker to assist with the increase in the social emotional needs of our students. And I've mentioned this every year also, but we would love to have air conditioning in our gym. It gets very hot at times, especially in ballgames and when we have ceremonies or a lot of people in the gym. And I would think Mr. Keller would agree, even on a regular day, it gets pretty hot in there. And one other concern that I wanted to mention is just our parking lot needs repaved. That lower lot, it's been a long time since it's been repaved and there's several holes in places that need patched that are in need of attention. But we appreciate each one of you all and the support that you continually give our school. And that's all I have this evening.
Any questions? Congratulations for your, your whole staff and team recognizing the fact that people do see your school and they want, you want it to look nice and you certainly do. Any other comments?
For current enrollment?
We are, we are low. We are at 201. It is much lower. Somewhere around, I guess COVID with the rest of the, I would say county, but maybe country. We've lost a lot of enrollment.
Yeah, that's a huge, huge drop.
It is.
I was laughing and telling Marcia a while ago that I think this is a parade of Charlotte schools tonight. I went to Cranberry Prosperity as a student and I'm not going to tell you all how ancient I am, but at that time, they had seventh and eighth grade at Cranberry Prosperity. That was many years ago. It went to eighth grade. I taught at Bradley Elementary and I was very proud to be principal at Maxwell Hill Elementary. So it's a parade of Charlotte schools tonight.
Ms. Richmond, thank you for the work you're doing. Please, I know it takes a whole village, but please send my thank you to Mr. Pugh. I know he'll be very proud. Maybe he's watching. I don't know, but. Well, I didn't say that, but thank you. Please, please tell him thank you from me.
I plan on calling him when I leave here.
He works hard at that and I'm sure he'll be excited that they won first, or that you won first place. And then, I think I've told you this before, but the work you're doing with PBIS, your Panther Pack, your PAWS store, it sounds like you're, the kids are enjoying it, but I can't imagine that they wouldn't. So thank you for that, what your teachers and staff are doing and what you're doing with that. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, but we'll start in just a moment.
So before we, before, can you, before we get started tonight, we do have what's called a Beautiful Campus throughout the county. And we do have four winners from elementary. We have 17 elementary schools. And we're happy to announce that Stanford Elementary this year is one of our Beautiful Campus Award winners. You guys are fourth place and you guys do a great job. And I can see you just keep progressing up the ladder, but I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, welcome, Stanford Elementary School. Go ahead.
Would you like me to introduce who we brought first? Okay, so I'll start on the end. This is Ms. Sherry Lilly. She is an ECAT in our first grade classroom. Beside her is Ms. Krista Blankenship, one of our first grade teachers. Beside her, Mr. Bobby Biggs. He's one of our community members at large. And then, we have Ms. Erin Warden. She is a parent, but she also is our second grade ECAT. And then, so she's not serving as a parent, but she is a parent. And then, we have Ms. Biggs, third grade teacher. Beside her, Ms. Barley, another first grade teacher. And then, we have our parent who is also our president of our PTO, Ms. Leann Russell. And she has brought with her our distinguished guest, Mr. Mason Russell, who also serves on our student government. And then, of course, I'm Elizabeth McDaniel. I'm the principal. Just jump right in. Okay. So we'll start with our data. On our balanced scorecard, we were very pleased that we met in behavior and math progress. We met our annual target for ELA in math. We also exceeded that standard. Partially met in attendance with 92.49%. One of our subgroups that we do need to focus on is in reading. In K2, our Children with Disabilities is a group that we're currently looking at. And so, we do have a new certified multicat teacher in that area. And so, we have gotten her some Sunde training. We're very interested in making sure that she understands the science of reading concepts and that she's applying those with those children with disabilities in that K2 group. In math, we overall scored a 74.74, which was up from 71.43. In reading, overall, 57.89 on the WVGSA, slightly down from 59.05. And in science, we were at a 39.47 and down from 50%. So, you know, that number can be kind of misleading because you're only looking at that fifth grade group. It's not like a three through five. It was one, one grade level. So the grade level before that's now at Beckley Stratton as a sixth grade didn't perform as well as that seventh grade group did when we had them. For attendance, we've been looking at that because that is one of our concerns. And so, so far this year, if you look at Zoom, we're at 94.77%. So we're up and we're holding steady. One of the things that we've started doing is we've instituted Blue the Husky. And each week, he goes and visits the homeroom with a high attendance. And that's been some good, healthy competition for the homerooms because they all want to have Blue come to their classroom. I personally have made more of a focus on attendance. Every morning on my announcements, I tell them what the previous day's attendance rate was. I tell them if, you know, we're on our goal, if we're below our goal, that we need to focus on this goal. With the parents, I send it out on my weekly Thrill Share, what our attendance was the prior week, what our goal is for the upcoming week, our student council. Our student council members, our student government, they also have some ideas for how to help us get our attendance rate up and to keep it up. We've done some fun things, like when we meet our attendance goal, sometimes we do a one-minute attend dance. And so we come over the intercom, and we play some music, and they get to dance. When we met a huge goal that we had, we had intercom bingo one day, and the kids had a lot of fun with that. So they bring me ideas because I think that's important, that the students tell us what it is that they would like to earn for incentives, for attendance, and for PBIS. For celebration, one of the things that we talked about as at LSIC is we were very happy that even though we had cut back on some staff members and we had some subs and some crucial long-term positions, that we increased in math and we held pretty steady on reading. One of the things I think that as a staff we do well, and we talked about it, is we don't make a lot of excuses. We roll up our sleeves and we get to work. And consistency is key. I think everybody on my staff agrees that we all have to be in alignment. We all have to believe in it, and if we believe in it, then the students believe in it, and then we achieve it. Some of our concerns, we did have some discipline concerns, and that's why I think it's important that we all institute PBIS in it with fidelity. So last year, as a committee, we got together, we made a team, we made sure we had a lot of different people involved on that team, and we came up with some consistent things. What does that look like for K2? What does it look like for 3-5? What is something that we all believe that every Husky can meet? And we came up with lead, and so we've really been working at that. Now that the students understand what lead means, now we've been caught leading them. So we have tickets that we, when we catch them, we have a focus. And again, I communicate that with the parents through Thrill Share as well because I feel like open communication, we all need to be on the same page. For science, that was a major concern. And so, you know, luckily, we have that title funding, and we used it for some hands-on science kits through Mystery Science. So I'm excited to walk around and see those hands-on applications of science. I tell people all the time, I didn't really enjoy science until I got to college, and I got to do big labs, and that's when I really had that, I just love science. So that hands-on is important, and then giving them opportunities to talk about the vocabulary, giving them opportunities to apply the scientific method to all subjects and just to the way that we think about life. So we're really focused on that as a staff. Some of our concerns, we don't really have a lot of concerns with curriculum. We feel like with our title money, we're able to be very good stewards of our money and get the resources that we need to proceed with anything. You know, the county's been very generous with all the different kits that you guys have bought that we, you know, didn't even have to use title money for. The math movement, we love that. A lot of the teachers are using that. I'm getting really excited about seeing that in the hallways. And then for our staff, we do professional development, we do book studies. We have a lot of good conversations through that. For personnel, of course, just like I heard the other school, we would love to have either a full-time counselor or a social worker. We also talked about it as LSIC, we wouldn't mind having a STEM or innovation that might help with science. For our facilities, one of the big concerns for PTO and for the staff has been shade on the playground, pre-K playground. Right now, they have, our pre-K have the same playground as everyone else, and we have a very large, beautiful playground. But it can be a safety concern with some of the young children running beyond what we would want them to run. Some of our staff at the LSIC mentioned that they wouldn't even mind having another pre-K room because they feel like that's one of the reasons our attendance has dropped, is because we only have one pre-K room, and then those kids started another pre-K, and they wanna continue out of district, and we understand that. Another suggestion for the LSIC came up of having a separate gym and a cafeteria area. Right now, you know, it's a tight schedule. We make it work. And other than that, I think those were the major concerns. Questions?
So the last school was asking for a grant, and you're also doing it. Who are you writing the grant to?
We have a playground grant every year.
Where's it go?
To us.
To us? Okay.
Yeah, the board approves funding every year, playground.
Thank you.
And just so the board knows, since you've heard a couple times now, we have a meeting, I think, this Friday, perhaps, oh, Thursday at 9:00, to talk about this playground grant, so. I would just say, thank you, Ms. McDaniel, in Stanford. You're doing great work. Just keep it up. I know your enrollment has declined some, so there have been some staffing changes. But you're doing great work, and just stay steady. I love some of the things you're doing for attendance. Obviously, attendance is a problem countywide, so all schools have certain things, you know, they're trying. But I like the one-minute attend dance. I can't dance, but I think students might have fun with it. Yes, that's what I was thinking. Now, Mason, one of our board members, he wasn't able to join us today. And, but he always asks if a student is present, what would be something, I think he says something you would change, but maybe what's your favorite thing about school and something that you would change? So not to put you on the spot, but how would you respond? One thing you wouldn't change or absolutely love about your school, and one thing that you would change? And Ms. McDaniel will be fine with whatever you say.
I would change the big playground to make more shade and make more space for the kids to play and run around.
Turned it off.
Math.
Math? Well, it looks like you're at a great school for loving math. They're doing great work in math, but I love to hear that. I'm a former math teacher. So that's great. More shade, and you love math at school. That's pretty good. So thank you, Mason. Thank you for coming out and sharing your time with us this evening, and thank you, Ms. McDaniel. I'm not sure if anyone else has something to say.
Any other, okay, thank you so much. Okay, moving right along. Yeah, thank you for coming, Stratton, and if you could introduce your people.
Use your mic. Okay, so I have three teachers with us tonight. Amanda Enman, Alicia Aston, and Sarah Sparks. I have Davy Sparks' parent, Tara Hopkins, Cheryl Kincaid. Also, I have Mr. Don Burton. He's a community member. Mr. Brian Brown, business owner. And then Alicia Smoot-Jones, general community member from St. Matthew's AME Church. So thank you guys for coming. And I'm sorry, very important person. He's at the top. Mr. Kelvin Pennell, assistant principal, and I'm Ms. Clay, Kristy Clay, principal. Okay, so looking at the bottom of the first page here, our math. We did, our scores went from a 20.22% in 23 to a 22.11%. We did meet the expectation or the goal in math. Our reading score went from a 20.22 to a 24.21. So we're very proud of the growth that we had last year. Our science went from 11% to 8.82, so we did go down in science. The question is, what is your major concern? So I'm speaking on behalf, of course, of the entire LSIC group. Our academic growth, staffing for general ed and self-contained classrooms. We are thankful for the addition of our new social worker position, as well as the addition of a Title I teacher. So we're very well-staffed as far as our Title I, and we're very thankful for that. Major concern is academic concern and meeting our annual reading target. So our reading target is quite large each year, so we have a long way to go to meet our target for reading. But as you can see, we did grow 4%, so we're working really hard to get that growth. We are concerned about some of the large class sizes for our grades, and we're concerned about the academic growth in those classrooms. We ask that consideration be given to staffing regarding the class sizes. We also house multiple self-contained classrooms and ask that training for special ed staff be considered to address our student needs. Historically, there's been a large, or teacher turnover has been high. And we, as administration, and the school as a whole, is working hard to improve the school culture and attract and maintain certified 10-year teachers, as well as high-quality substitutes to fill each classroom vacancy. With your support, we are hopeful to achieve student success and teacher retention, increase student engagement, academic achievement, and decrease classroom disruption as well as teacher burnout. The second major concern that we had, and we'd be amiss not to mention it. First of all, our students are enjoying the time outdoors. The students and staff are very appreciative of our new playgrounds. It's like Disneyland to them, and we're so happy for our students. However, as with any new instruction, there are adjustments, construction, excuse me, there are adjustments needed to ensure safety and preservation. With our preschool playground, we're asking that there be some type of gate or mechanism, that it be reevaluated to allow ease of exit by an adult, but not for a child. Because we do have, there are times, even with supervision, that our little ones want to get to our gate and get that open. And as you all are aware, the playground in the back does, as you, if you leave that, you're stepping out onto a parking lot. Our community playground, we've had parents, teachers, and community members reach out to us regarding the front playground. And we want to ensure the preservation of the beautiful playground that has been provided. We're concerned about the lack of supervision during the evening hours and night hours, as well as the lack of adherence to school rules, or to the rules that are posted. So we ask for some solution or some help with that, please. What is your plan to correct or address the major concerns? So we have extended our PBIS initiative. We are providing small group instruction and intervention throughout our building. Every child in our building receives Tier 2 instruction beyond the core. We do have a very high poverty rate, and we also have, you know, as you can tell in our scores, we need that small group instruction as much as possible to fill in those gaps of our students. We are seeing that our lower grade levels are performing, and we have a larger percentage of those students that are meeting proficiency. But with our higher grade-level students, especially our fourth and fifth, that's where we feel that we're most problematic in our school. Our staff members give 101% to guarantee that all students receive the education they deserve. And so we're very creative in our scheduling and initiatives that we provide to all of our students, including our self-contained classrooms. So part of our PBIS additions to reduce behaviors and additional social emotional concerns, we are providing the Tier 1, 2, and 3, as indicated in the NTSS for the state. We have calm-down corners in our classrooms, and we utilize restorative practice during those calm-down times. So if we have a student that has a particular concern, we find a particular activity for them to partake in as they're calming down, and we're trying everything we can to keep them in the classrooms. We have daily morning meetings in our homeroom, along with character lessons. We did purchase a program called Character Strong that we use with our students to set the tone for the day and establishing a sense of community amongst one another. We also provide whole-group sessions with our SEL team. So our counselors, CIS, and social worker, they all work together and provide whole-group instruction. And they've also been given referrals for certain students and behaviors, and they pull those students for small-group sessions throughout each week to address those concerns. We have daily announcements of Character Strong's focus, as well as the school-wide behavior expectations. And then additional components of PBIS are also utilized. Okay, how are we addressing it, or how can you assist us? With curriculum, first of all, we want to say how excited we are about the iReady math adoption. We love our maths. The kids absolutely love them. The manipulatives needed to support those programs are greatly appreciated. We feel like that that's essential for students to learn real-life skills in math, is to have those hands-ons, hands-on materials. So we're really appreciative of that. We have had a few to reach out, some classroom teachers, asking that when the new adoption occurs, that they may, if you would please, consider using the same curriculum across all grade levels. Currently, we're using two different reading curriculums. Staff development, PD opportunities provided for our new math curriculum are very beneficial in getting effective instruction up and running. And we're also very thankful for the YUKIRU training provided by the special ed department. That has been something very much appreciated, and we use quite a bit. So we're appreciative of that. Personnel, we are asking, and I know the county, and they're working on this, is providing support. And I have, we have seen an increase in that, just to continue with support for long-term subs, teacher mentors, and self-contained classrooms. And regarding the self-contained, we request that training be supported in the specific disability. Currently, this year and last year, we did not have any certified teachers in those areas, and they're really at a disadvantage when they come into those classrooms and knowing how to deal with those students. So we ask if there's a way that we could provide additional support or training, as well as initiatives to draw people into those programs for us. We do have four of those programs in our, in our building. If possible, we also, well, I already mentioned that, so. All right. Facilities, we are extremely proud of our new facility. Our students, parents, and community, as well as staff, feel valued, and we look forward to seeing the new Tribute Center and its completion. So we're excited about that. What is our biggest accomplishment? We have decreased behaviors this year. Our behaviors at this time to date have absolutely, or actually gone down by 50%. So we're really, really happy with that because we know until behavior's under control, learning will not occur. And we're also excited about the culture, bringing in some 10-year teachers to our building. And we hope that we'll continue that, and we're working hard to do that, as well as our academic growth. Our 23-24 scores yielded, and you see that I have this bolded, yielded the high scores in reading since 2020, 2021 school year. And our 23-24 scores yielded the high scores in math since 2018-19. So we, as I said earlier, we did meet our target goal in math, and we also gained two spots on SchoolDigger. So we're gonna work, you know, harder on our science this year, and hopefully, we can increase that even more. We also want to thank you once again for the beautiful facility. for the beautiful facility and playground that you've provided the community and students at Stratton. Our students enjoy being able to run and play outside. We're proud of our parent and community involvement, as well as the opportunities that are provided at our school to build relationships. We're thrilled to celebrate academic growth among our students as we recognize those accomplishments throughout the year. Our students are, I wonder if our little one would tell them, you know what we say each morning? You want to tell them what we say each morning? You are what? That make you nervous? What do we say each morning when we go over the Bulldog Code of Conduct? You are smart, you are... I think I made her nervous. So our students at Stratton are smart, important, and loved, and we tell them that each and every day. And we ask that you consider our unique needs and perspectives when we make requests to make our school better. Together, we can continue to embrace challenges. This year, Stratton Elementary is reaching for the stars. Thank you.
Do you see much activity on the playground after school?
Our community members and others, we see that. We get reports of it.
I can tell you, anytime I'm by there, on the weekends or in the evenings, there's always, no, always just an exaggeration, okay? Ninety-some percent of the time, there's somebody on the playground, lots and lots of times, playing basketball. So, yeah, it's been used a lot. I was also, you made a statement about class size is problematic. Did you make that statement, or did I dream that?
Yeah, the building itself, the classrooms are small. They're smaller than the desk that we have, or the office shape. That makes us a little cramped. And it's hard when we have certain behaviors and things in the classroom. And we're not necessarily over that ratio. We're just adding for consideration for the students that we have in the building to help with our academic progress.
So you have some tight classrooms. Do you have some at the limit?
Well, not now, ma'am.
Oh, not now?
No, we've had a sub provided in one of our classrooms. Yes, to separate one of our grade levels.
Oh, so you had to separate a grade level because of enrollment? Ah, okay. Okay, well, did you have the classrooms to do that? Oh, well, that's good, then.
We had one fifth right, and then we were provided a sub for, to kind of help with that, and we're dividing the kids up into small groups.
Has your enrollment been consistent?
Yes, ma'am, but we're very transient. We might have three or four leave, and then they may get three or four move in.
Yeah.
So it's really hard to track. Now, we have, I would say, maybe 80 percent of our students that we can track from the beginning of the school year, but then that other 20 percent are in and out.
Yeah, and I know you mentioned and said that academic achievement was a goal and was a problem, and it should be something that's high on the list. But don't celebrate your success. It may be small, but at least you achieved, and that's all you can hope for. You know, you take it one step at a time. You're not going to be Superman and do it all one...
We're reading it.
Hey, 3 percent, 2 percent. At least you did not decrease. So you have to pat yourself on the back and say, hey, we did achieve, and that's what you have to keep reaching for.
Well, we're very proud of our staff and our families and our community. We really are, and we know it's why we like to reach for the stars, because we know we can get there, and it's going to be...
Hey, take it one step at a time. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, and echoing Dr. Hutchins, as I've said before, increase is in the right direction. That's all we can ask for, and just little steps become big steps. So that's good, increases in both reading and math. That's wonderful. I do, and Mr. Snuffer was unable to join us this evening, and I'm not sure if she'll speak, but he typically asks students who are present what they love most about their school and one thing that they would change about their school. So I'm wondering if you might tell me one thing you love about Stratton, and one thing, and it doesn't matter what you say. Just one thing you love and one thing, if you could change it, you would change it. Journey, that's your name, Journey. Yes, she is. I love her hair. I've been admiring it. So can you speak in the mic and tell us one thing you love?
Testing one, two.
And one thing you would like to change?
Math.
You love math? Well, you're the second student tonight who's told us you love math. That's Ms. Emmens' class over there. That's wonderful. And what would you change? One thing, if you could change anything, what would you change at Stratton? Can't think of anything? Well, that must mean the teachers and staff are doing a great job, and your principal and assistant principals. So that's wonderful. Journey, thank you for sharing with us this evening. Very welcome. Hope you have a good day tomorrow. Thank you, Stratton. Thank you, Ms. Clay.
Thank you.
I'm doing good, sir. How are you? Doing great. Yeah. Y'all about to say names? No? Are you younger? Gosh, I don't know. Oh, thank you, baby. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Journey.
Yeah, I'll tell you what. Okay, she's 77, or 78. Yeah, she is. Definitely over 100. Thank you.
I'm good. I'm good, too.
I want to come back and pick on it. Remember that. I had so much fun that day.
It's like being in a courtroom. Y'all might be mad. Yeah, yeah. She's doing good. She's doing good. She's in her preschool. She doesn't talk a whole lot. She's real quiet. She's real quiet. Yeah, yeah. She's real loud.
Okay, Stratton. Beckley Stratton, excuse me. Good evening, President Ford, esteemed board members, and Dr. Starcher. And I'm going to just go in and say we have quorum, but I'm going to go through the LSIC members. Teachers, we have Allison Atkins, Jessica Huffman, and Vicky Webb. Service personnel, Teresa Martin and Carrie Shrewsbury. Unfortunately, our parents aren't here because some of them had to go to the Mount Hope League that they're having drafts for right now. So we got knocked out of that on that one. At-large members are Cortina Nichols, Brittany Worley, Evelyn Moore, but the parents were Jamie Mal, Tara Neal, and Amanda Moore. And then our student representative is Talon Huffman. And I like to say something about Talon Huffman before we go on. He's going to be our representative for youth in government this year, and he's actually going to like that because he was at West Virginia Governor's Academy, if I'm correct, during the summer. So he was, he's special to us, so we enjoy having him here. And we're expecting another Social Studies Fair winner, state Social Studies Fair winner from him also. Let me put that pressure on you. And what also makes Beckley Stratton run, if it wasn't for Ms. Melon and McMillan and Megan Shay, we couldn't run at all. So I just appreciate them being here. They have taken over a lot of the work, and it's just impressive to watch them see what they do and just see them grow as leaders. So I appreciate them also. Most importantly, let's look at performance measures on a summit of assessment. Best this year, we actually, we grew. We had growth. We had growth. So in math, we went 3 percent in math. In ELA, we went 5 percent. In science, 5 percent also. We like to thank the board, Dr. Starcher, and also the directors. We were given a, I'm just going off a little bit of topic right now. We were actually given an academic coach for the first time, and it was just appreciative to have an academic coach. I didn't realize how much that would improve us, and it really did, because we can get around to the classrooms and help out our instructors and help out, most importantly, our students. But it was just nice to have that academic coach, and we love that support that we were able to see. But our expectations at best involves increasing our percent proficiency in the 2024-2025 school term in all three subjects of math, ELA, and science. I remember getting a call and having some members stop by while I was trying to cut some grass on the road, and they told me, did you look at the results of School Digger? I'd already heard, because Dr. Starcher had told me, and I was just glad that we made the jump that we did. The jump was over 75 points, but it was just, it was just, it was nice and appreciative for somebody to just stop at the house and just say, look, while you're cutting grass, this is what's going on.
I was stalking him, just right back there.
Yeah, exactly. Because I thought so. What is our major concern for the 2024 school term? Pretty much is the proficiency in math. That's where we're at. My belief is math helps dictate everything that goes on from all students. So we're trying to do that completely. Finally, what is our major concern? Like I said, we want to make sure we have best-certified math instructors for all grade levels. That's been a first for us here at the school. So this is the first time this happened. So we all, we finally do have fully-certified teachers in math. What is our plan to correct and address the major concerns? We're doing the diagnosis, doing the interim, but doing our readies. We're going through and having our data talks. We're letting parents understand what's going on with the students. And most importantly, what I will get to, and I'll talk about that later here in a second, this is part of what, you know, I was at the beach when Dr. Starcher called me, and she was like, do you want to do Title I? Why would we not? Why would we not? She was like, you make that decision. I'm not going to make that for you. I was just so blessed when we were given that opportunity for Title I. It's changed up the dynamics of our school culture and climate here, and we were just blessed with the people who we got for Title I. And, you know, they're helping out inside the classrooms. One of the things that they're doing is they're addressing math in ELA at all grade levels. They've helped with, they've helped out also with the data notebooks, data talks, and also discussion with iReady process. So they've already done that on all grade levels, having those iReady talks, data talks, data notebooks. So we're great with that. And the students are looking around and like, these are my scores. I've got to do better. And that's the most important thing. When you put it for the students to see, well, this is where you're at, they're like, I've got to do better, not only for the school, I've got to do better for myself. And that's what Title I has allowed us to do also. So we're very appreciative of that. Briefly list to the board. High-quality education, they're giving that to us by just the new math in ELA that we're doing, Simple Solutions also. In addition to that, just the resources that we've been able to use as a county. Staff development, just continuing training in APL strategies. The county has again started training in math in ELA. They've implemented these trainings already this school term. We've had several teachers go to this so far, and they're coming back excited about what's going on. So we're making that move also, along with the rest of the county. And just, I know that we had got grants for PBIS. I know that we're all trying to get on board and making sure that we do everything PBIS from one school to another inside Raleigh County, and we're also trying to do what we can at best also. Personnel, I think that since Governor Justice decided to make his wife on the State Board of Education, I think we're good with community in schools. So I don't think there's going to be any problem with that. I think she's got, she's up there for nine years, if I'm correct. I thought I saw a nine-year term, so we're good with community in schools. In addition to that, just continue with the Title I, and I'd like, again, I'd like to thank Malty and I'd also, Ms., who's getting ready to retire. And it's 29 days. So, yeah. And Ms. McClung. Ms. McClung, I want to just say that we appreciate what y'all have done for us this year. It's been so, it was just such a great thing when Ms. McClung and Malty, Ms. Reeve, actually talked to us about Title I and getting it stressed out. It got me stressed out about money, but I had, I had, I had two assistants that were able to spend this money within less than a month's time. Is that about right? Yeah, record time. Well, I spent a lot of it at first, but they helped out. So we're appreciative there. And continue, we want to make sure we continue with our Title I instructors and also our social worker. Our social worker just had a baby, and we're without her for right now, but we're so blessed she was able to have her child. In addition to that, facilities, Best is thankful for Raleigh County Schools paying the second floor of our facilities in the summer of 2024. Best is looking forward to the first floor and the rest of the building being painted in the summer of 2025. We had made early requests for entrance outings. They came by last year to look at the audience in the front and in the back, and we're just waiting on that. We were told that was going to happen, and it'd just be beneficial, especially for our, for all of our students, but especially our moderate and special ed students. It would be important for them also. In addition to that, Raleigh County Schools is in a, we are requesting this. We're requesting floor scrubbers, the 28th discs. Best only has one floor scrubber for 99,000 square feet. And we try to make sure that we open up our school for everybody in the community. We want to make sure that it's a public facility. If we can, we will help provide whatever service we can here, whether it be the county elementary tournament, being a summer league. And I know one year we opened it up for shady for the girls' wrestling tournament, the first girls' wrestling tournament, yeah, they called over. We'll do that. That's not a problem. So we'll work with anybody if we can for our facilities. Best is also requesting that the LGI room be remodeled after 28 years. The carpet really needs to be pulled up, and desks need to be removed from the classroom. There are several broken desks. Best would like a lecture-style classroom with removable chairs and just tables affixed to the concrete. More importantly, Best is requesting the carpet in the library. I'm glad we're in the library right now. The carpet in the library has not been done since the beginning of the school. We were just blessed that, I don't think that that was even done when we had the flood, but, I mean, we can see the spots on it right now, and just, it's wear and tear. It's just any normal facility. It's just wear and tear is what it is. What else we need? Lastly, Best would like to thank RCS for the process of starting to replace our bleachers in the gym. That happened yesterday during Veterans Day. Came over and let them in, and they started a process of removing the bleachers. They're going to remove the bleachers and then start painting, and then put the bleachers, put new bleachers back up. So we are appreciative of that also. So that's going to happen in the next couple of days. Tell us about our success. Well, Bulldog Broadcast is always one of our successes. We like to see, we put our kids out like they are. They go out, interview, we put a teacher spotlight. We try to make it to where our parents get to come inside the school, even though they're not, even though they're not inside the school, they're with us and showing them, this is what's going on inside of the school. And one thing that we've also been able to do this year, and one of the great levels, and one of the teams, they've gotten to the point where they're letting everyone know what's going on inside the school instructional-wise. That's important to people, for our parent-school community to see what's going on inside our school in the instruction. In addition to that, we've already had a Title I engagement night. That went successful, and we're looking forward to the next Title I engagement night, where we're actually going to have a game, where we're going to do games and other things. And have, in addition to that, we're going to make sure that we have informational for our parents to...
Without a doubt, there's a compassion and enthusiasm in this building. I know you said we assigned a coach here last year, and she went away to your neighboring school, but I, we hated to do that, but there's just a difference in the culture in talking with you and our meetings earlier this year. So, I'm just proud. I'm proud of the gains you showed, and small steps, I've said this multiple times tonight, small steps will lead to big steps. I know, I'm confident you're on the right path here, and just keep working, and we'll try not to bother you when you're mowing or at the beach, but those were important conversations to have. So, anyway, thank you very much for what you're doing, and I do have, I need to ask your student a couple of questions. Our board vice president's not here this evening, and he does send his regards, but in his, on his behalf, he normally asks any student who attends two questions, and I'm confident you're going to answer both of them. Most times, a student will answer one, but not both. So, here are the two questions, and you can answer them however, which order you want. First of all, what is your favorite thing about Beckley Stratton Middle School? And then, if you could change anything about your school, what would that be? And Mr. Smith won't hold it against you.
We'll leave that.
So, if I had to say my favorite thing about this school, it would be our staff, administration, and teachers, how they're all very kind and helpful, but there isn't too much I would change, but if there's one thing, I would wish that there were more clubs and extra ways for students to get involved. Oh, that's excellent, Town. Thank you so much. And we've talked about that a little bit, increasing our club opportunities, just other ways for kids to be involved. So, that's great. Well, I appreciate your feedback, and see, I told you, you'd be able to answer both. I could see it. So, thank you for coming tonight and being a part of this meeting. We really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you again, Mr. Smith, and thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, this meeting is adjourned.